Hello. Good morning. I'm calling regular meeting to order. Mike.
President.
Mike.
President.
Rick.
Here.
Here.
Here, President.
President.
President. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion. This is motion for the Senate.
Motion.
Motion for the Senate. Mike. On favor.
Aye.
Close. Couple of in vote. Time plays for items not already on the agenda with a time limit of three minutes each. And you?
I'm Cindy Golding, your state representative. And so I'm going to all the 11 towns in our district, finding out what the issues are and just requesting your input when things come up because I hear about it after the fact, oh, this happened, but did you know about this? Well, no, I have not served on a city council, I don't know. But I do know that a lot of the challenges we have are not the two parties, but rural versus urban, the big cities versus our small towns. And so I need you guys to keep me informed about things that as you hear things come up, what, how it might impact Lisbon, how the things that, oh, wait, we have to talk about this. So I have already put amendments on bills that I thought were bad for small towns and got a little bit in trouble about it, but some of them, as you guys have talked about their water mains and stuff, they wanted to put a statewide restriction on what towns could do about the wastewater off the, for construction, as you're talking about new developments. Well, the land here, the terrain is very different than what's in western Iowa. And we need to be able in our area to determine how much topsoil should be returned, what kind of runoff should be allowed. I don't think that should be a statewide thing, so I put an amendment on it that effectively paused the bill, it didn't kill it. But there are other things like that, that I was aware of that because I've seen the problems over by, I live over by Hiawatha, northwest of Hiawatha, and some, there's a big developer there that is absolutely abusing the current rules. And that same developer is over in Palo and abusing the current rules. And they are behind some of this push for statewide rules. And they go into small towns and say, well, so sue us. They have, you know, a league of lawyers and they know that our small towns don't. And so these are some of the things I'm watching. So if you guys see what's coming up, please let me know. Because there are ways, we might not be able to completely kill it, but we might be able to put amendments on that protect us in ways that, you know, we don't have legions of lawyers in our small towns. And that's what they're counting on. So I need you guys to let me know.
Thank you.
I know, like one day, you know, President Biden signed a infrastructure bill, you know, and then it seems that when states get it, the largest issue.
Well, there's that. And there's also the carbon sequestration stuff that is going to hit us very hard with the things about, I mean, I've looked at that very closely and the dangers for our small communities and the kill zones around those pipelines. You know, you get a leak in a gas line or an oil line, natural gas goes up, oil kind of spreads. You get a leak in a CO2 line and it kills anything in its, you know, within so many feet. And they call it the red zone, I call it the kill zone, where you have seconds, you know, in our, you know, they can't get in, our emergency can't get there fast enough to rescue people. So we're talking about these kinds of things.
And that's just south of Mount Vernon is where they're putting their...
Oh, they keep changing.
Yep.
Well, it's going through my parents' property, that's how, why I know.
Yeah, and it's all over western Iowa and they're crisscrossing each other. There are some, they, I know a farmer that has three pipelines going through his farm, going in different directions. So anyway, those are the things we're working on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion possible action in reference to street closure for Halloween Town.
This is for my Halloween Town event on the 31st. We would close Main Street from, or Main Street, Jackson to Walnut at 12:00 PM, so that would be in front of the businesses. We would leave the intersection open, but eventually at four o'clock, we'd shut down East Market to South Street. And I probably wouldn't go all the way to South Street, I'd go just in front of the alley next to, or behind Bill's Tap. We'll shut down from there, that way people can still access the alley and access East and South Street. So if you guys are good with that, those will be the roads that I would close down. Same roads we close down for the event every year.
Motion.
I make a motion to close down the said streets and times that Drayton has announced.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action in reference to benches at Pleasant Grove Park.
If you've been by the nature park lately, you've noticed pergola, I think is how it's pronounced. It's, Steve put it up in memory of Doris McAmel, and now he wants to put pavers down and put a couple of benches underneath of it, as well as a bench inside the gazebo that's down there. So I just want to make sure that everybody's okay with that. It's in memory of Doris McAmel, I think it's a great idea, and if you guys agree with that, we'll move forward with it.
Absolutely.
Make a motion to...
Rick, do it.
What?
Rick, do it.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you. Speak up, Rick, I second the motion.
Got motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Discussion possible action in reference to water services on South Jackson and Business 30.
You'll see the drawing in your packet, and then today I gave you, up in front of you, you have two different quotes. The one quote is for Brecky to do all the work, the other quote is for just their labor and we would have to supply the everything else. We don't have that quote yet, but it's probably going to be about $90,000.
I was just going to explain the drawing, people had questions, but I didn't get the quotes, Brandon and Travis can, let him explain.
So just so you guys are aware, and either one of these two can interject, so when we were digging along South Jackson, services to BoDillens, the apartments and Junction Auto were not mapped. We had a general idea from other issues and stuff where we thought they were. So when we found them, we found a one-inch service at all three locations. So in order to do this legally, we have to put this in correctly. So what this would be is a four-inch main coming off of the, it's called, four-inch service, coming off the new main, it'd go somewhere probably, so we don't have to get an easement, it'd make the most sense to go north side of the white poles, but somewhere in that vicinity, and then it would be around one-inch services to each three of these, each one of these three places.
So one of these is for labor and the one is for their duty, right?
Right, for everything.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we just talked about, our guys already have enough stuff to do, let me guess.
I, I think it's a no brainer.
Yeah, I gotta throw in four years, yeah.
And they're gonna do a hiring that looks down by like a park or...
Yeah, we thought at the end of it, we'd just either put something in case we ever needed water on that side, or we wanted to, you know, like Drake has got right now, he has some soccer fields there, if we ever wanted to run a sprinkler or anything, there's really no water on that end of the park, so.
I got a question. What is saw type dust control?
When we have concrete that's put down on this saw track, if they do that and drive, there's a dust cloud that goes all over the place. We're in residential areas, we don't want to have that dust go along people's vehicles and windows. You get, some people have allergies or that sort of thing. So the dust control is to either have a vacuum that pulls that up as they're saw cutting or they wet saw it, they can choose which option they want, but they have to make sure that they do that so the dust doesn't go over.
Where are we at with the budget on this? Are we under budget right now? Are we right at budget, do you want to mean? I'm just curious.
Um...
I know there were some things that, it was about $11,000, I... Yeah, there was a couple savings.
I don't have, I don't have it with me to...
Okay, no, I, no, I kind of caught you off guard, so I apologize, but...
There were a few areas where we had to do some major repair of the intersection.
Yeah.
That's a pretty big expense, so even though we were able to save money on a few spots, that's one of the larger...
I mean, I don't think it's, I, I think the writing's on the wall, our guys have too much to do as it is. So I personally think that you should let Brecky take, take the, take the walk on this.
That's pretty much the discussion.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion, thank you.
With us supplying the parts?
Let them do everything.
I'll second.
Do you have a recommendation on which financial, which is the best way to go?
Do we own all the parts?
We make a phone call and get all the parts.
We don't currently own many of them.
But it saves a markup on it.
You got a motion to second to set Brecky's, we had a $24 hiring.
Still need to get an answer, though. Do you have a recommendation?
Who, us?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking to Dave.
Which is financially and considering our workers? Well, this got, just so people know, this got kind of dumped on us at the end of last week, and I wanted to make sure I got a quote because I didn't want to prove something, it has to be done. So I don't have the individual quote all itemized out, but if we provided the parts, it would be cheaper because they have a markup when they go to do this that work.
Any guess, any guess on what that cheaper is?
I would say probably double that, double that, or maybe put $10,000 added on to that eight.
Five to six thousand.
So eighty-seven, so probably say...
This is as simple as a phone call? This is as simple as a phone call?
We go, yeah, go pick it up.
Yeah.
To save $6,000?
Yeah, I, I was asking. You don't need to ask if you can save $6,000. But we're still installing.
No, they don't.
No, James, they were doing the labor.
Yeah. Well, we buy the parts in-house.
There's markups that they can add to, you need to have a quote with that.
And this, this becomes an $18,000 project now to $25,000?
No, I didn't know the whole savings of $6,000, that, that changes a lot, obviously.
Do you want to rescind hers? We just have to do it.
But, what? I'm gonna rescind it just because now I know, I mean, if we're talking, if we're talking that much saving, I mean, that's a huge savings. And if it takes one guy to run and get it, is that gonna take away from what they're doing?
I mean, it's worth the savings.
At that point, it's worth the savings, right? So, yeah, absolutely, yeah. So yes, I'm rescinding.
I need a motion.
I make a motion.
I don't know how much it's gonna save, but I know it's gonna save a certain amount.
Right, right. Even if, if we're talking thousands, that, that's a savings to me. If we're talking a few hundred, then eh, I'd say, you know what, whatever, by the time we pay mileage and whatever. But I'm gonna make a motion to that we supply the products and the equip, or whatever it is, and let Brecky take the labor, let them do the labor on it.
So your motion is to approve that $8,000 settlement?
Correct, correct.
I'll second.
Got motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right. Discussion possible action in reference to payment number six to Brecky for water improvements in the amount of $2,000, $209,520 to save one cent.
And then that seventy one cents cheaper?
That's the markup.
So again, this is a progress statement, so it's effective for the work, it's not completed to date, and we review this, agree with the comment, and approve.
So is there the 77% complete? Or like 1.7 million right now? We have a total approved 1.7.
Is there a schedule here or will we already pay?
Yeah, so the, if you look on the last page, there's a box there that says total previously approved.
Yeah.
That's the 1.773.
But that's, that's the, that's the top end of the project, we've paid apparently...
Well, that's a lot of...
No, it's only paid.
That's only paid, so...
That is what we paid.
Right, only $209,520.
The contract price is up in the top left.
It, on the first page.
2.695.
You have a motion to this?
I make a motion to pay Brecky any amount that's listed.
Got a motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
I already signed the check.
Resolution 30, 2023, approving TIF rebate transfer. Do you want this one?
Uh, this is our normal TIF rebates, this is the one to budget lines, mustang investments, however you want to refer to them. They have shown proof that they've paid their full year taxes, so they have a right to their full year rebate. And I've worked with Maggie, we know that this is the correct amount, so I just need to be, this resolution moves the money from TIF over to the special fund for them to get paid out.
Got a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Resolution 31, 2023, approving utility lien.
All right, I just want to go over this one because this is probably uncharted territory. This residence here did not pay the water bill, so per ordinance, we shut the water bill off. I can't find another circumstance where somebody eventually didn't come pay the water bill or it get moved to a different name, so the water's still shut off. However, since they didn't pay it, you know, like a week later or whatever, they've just never come down. There has been instances where they turned the water on themselves. We, as police involved, we've had our attorney involved, we've already put liens on the house for this type of stuff, we've had citations, couldn't prove who did it. The water's currently shut off, however, they still have city services, so I can't confirm or deny, or I don't know if they've used garbage recycling that we pay for. So what this is, typically if somebody doesn't pay their water bill, they come down here a day or two, week, whatever later, they pay, we turn it back on and we go above. But they've never done that. So this lien is because their water's shut off, however, I've turned on their account to still give them a monthly minimum bill for our ordinance because they're still rendering those services, or could be.
They're still living in the house?
I don't have any idea.
So here's what you do, find out through it, do this all the time. I don't know, you guys, your attorney won't file theft of services?
Doug, do you, what do you, what do you end up saying with that?
So they were trying to do theft of services, but because they could specifically identify the person who turned on the water, they dismissed the charge.
Okay. Then the person who we think turned on the water isn't the one who owns the house, it's the son who's actually living there.
So why don't you, so number one, you can't have water, you can't reside in the hole without water.
That's what I was saying.
Okay. In, in the mechanics, what we do, we do, we charge and so on.
We charge.
So what, so what you also can do, you can also, we, we did, they, what we did is we bought the, the water department bought these caps.
That's on there.
And you got a cap?
Yep.
And put a liner and they've been cut off?
No, it's not been on since.
Huh?
It's not been on since.
The water hasn't been turned on?
The cap's kept, nobody's disturbed.
Their cap's working.
It's kept, it's protected, our service. Can you charge somebody with receiving stolen property?
That's, that's your theft of services.
It's all the same.
Yeah.
The difference is it's a criminal offense versus a civil lien. So your burden proof is much higher on criminal offense, you have to prove beyond reasonable doubt this person is responsible.
Yep.
Versus going back to the property owner on a civil lien.
An initial infraction wouldn't work?
That's a civil.
So we recommended to...
Anybody having ring cameras around the neighborhood?
We've checked.
Oh, yeah. Trying to figure out if you guys, if you guys want it.
We were advised to just continue doing this. Like, we're gonna have to go over there and mull the yard, I'm sure to, but I don't, I can't tell you if somebody's living there or not. I have no, there's, there's, there's vehicles that come and go, but I don't know.
I'd have to look at, I don't know the address, I don't know that street very well, so, but I can tell you if it's who I think it is or the house. I did see somebody drive into the garage.
There's no garage.
There's no garage? Okay, never mind that.
No, me? No, subject. Subject. So wouldn't this come under the Linn County Health Department, somebody living in a house without water service?
It comes under auto limits.
We, we have it in ours, but I just can't determine it.
Is it a rental property?
No.
No?
Well, unless it's to the son, I, I don't, I don't know. There is, there is, I have seen vehicles in different, like, you, I have never seen people.
Just vehicles.
But you go by, there's a motorcycle, and there, there's a different car. One day the car doors were open, and I tried to catch them numerous times. Now, I talked to the son a while back, he said the house is going to go up for sale, but wouldn't, he wasn't bold, I said, do you live in there? He, I live in Cedar Rapids, so it's not my house. It's just this, you get, you got this runaround. We've been, how long has this been going on? Six, six, eight months?
Yeah.
I'm making a motion to use a lien on them now.
I second that motion.
Do you have any other direction to take other than doing this?
I mean, you've kind of gone in reality, maybe possibly again, and as long as they're not turning it back on, that, since the cap's been on, then...
Got a motion to second?
For what?
To apply the utility lien.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Hey.
Aye.
To public hearing for October 23rd, 2023, corrupt dates on water meter ordinance. Travis will go with this one.
So since we converted over to radio reads, the newer meters all have batteries in them to give a signal out and tell us what it does. With that, the way ordinance reads is anything over a one-inch size meter is on the property owner to buy or replace if it goes bad. Well, with newer meters, especially the two and the three-inch meters on the industrial Well, with the newer meters, especially the two and the three inch meters on the industrial side, is that battery is only good for about ten years. Well, if the meter itself isn't failing, it's the battery that we need so we can read it. So we just want to update that ordinance saying that we will replace the battery part of it at our cost, not at their cost. But if there's catastrophic failure due to the meter loaded or negligence, it would still be on the, the property owner.
So we're gonna charge the battery and charge of our cost?
No, we're just gonna, it's just, yeah, just replace the battery. It's basically the school and the industrial park.
Need a motion to set the public hearing for October twenty-third?
Make a motion to set the public hearing for October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? First box.
Nothing. I sent you guys the email reference to civil rights complaint, they all call that. Reference to the shed, that's the only thing I have there. Um, that's still ongoing.
City engineer report. Figure it'd be easier to talk through the progress of the one, trying to, drawing with the indication. Talking about intersections sometimes is difficult, so.
I always like a colored picture.
Where's the roundabout one?
It was, don't start with that.
So currently most of the work effort is over on Jackson, and if you're on the intersection of Main and Jackson, I've intersections that most that are replaced. We have some sidewalk, we'll put additional work to do there, but the roadway's unpaid. They're working on services, the water main's installed, um, all the way down, but we need to hook services up between Main Street and Business Thirty. The red shaded area there is the services they're planning to do this week in side that red dash box. And the yellow shaded area they're planning to do next week, we do have a connection we need to make it south. And that was if they put the new main and they put a T on, but we need to get it disinfected and tested before we can get it back out. So as they go past, we'll connect that. Um, we have some surface restoration, DeJuan Jackson wants to get that done and pay me whatnot. That's at least a couple of weeks worth of work, you know, to get those services tied back and get some of that stuff cleaned up.
On Jackson?
On Jackson. We're attempting to get Jackson completely done because that's a detour route. And once we move traffic over there, we don't want to have any other construction equipment, vehicles, anything else narrow on the street creating issues. So, uh, it's, it's going to be pretty close. Um, that means, uh, two weeks out, possibly three weeks. We will be back over and finish up that area on Washington Street between Main and South. So, uh, the crew is currently also installing, um, on Jackson South, Business Thirty, putting that water main in. That really doesn't have much impact on detour route or anything else. It's something they're doing sort of off to the side. But that area that we talked about, the intersection of Main Street and, uh, Washington, that's going to be pretty close. And we've made the efforts to try to get that down before Halloween town, but, um, depending upon how things go with getting this all put back in on Jackson. It's, it's going to be pretty close, so they get in there, get that down, and get over to Washington, so. Pushing on, but at least we've got to make sure that it feel good now, I'm getting it side together. A little surprise that we found with the water service line, that's not gonna get worked out. There'll have some work to do to get that put in. Uh, we might be able to get that stepped out and, uh, we'll work within our schedule to the extent we can, but, um, there. We're going to be pushing for the architect Jackson on it and get back over.
My question is, uh, with the rain this week and this new development with this line, it's probably gonna push them another week. Is it possible maybe once this gets done and we are like within two or three days of Halloween town, that we maybe have them do the South Street tie-in prior to going out Washington, just to buy us a couple more days?
We can talk that over with them. Uh, probably you talk with Recky and find out what they're gonna do is to get their fear up there to get that done. So, uh, yeah, be some kind of discussion when we're next to trucking it.
Any questions, Dave?
It's, it's truly coming down to safety, so if we just have to go out in Washington trying to get that ready. You're gonna have the park there with stuff going on in the park, you're gonna have concrete trucks trying to force sidewalks back going down there.
I, I say keep Jackson closed as long as you think till it's done.
I mean, yeah. That's, that's the whole thing. I know we sat here and said we wanted to have the intersections done, but this is why it's gonna be really close.
The other thing too is if you did them both right now, you'd be running semis with Green Town Fifth Avenue and Monroe. And I don't think that's.
So are, let me, are they gonna open from Main Street to?
East Market, West Market.
Yeah, when they're paying, are they gonna open that? Are they gonna open up the intersection while they're still working down there?
So this will get opened once they're done with the intersection sidewalks and everything, yeah, that can get opened.
So that'll be open sometime this week.
Yeah.
Any questions? Public work.
Uh, Dave hit on a lot of it. Um, we ended up, we got a phone call five o'clock the other morning and they were ready to haul sludge. So we went ahead and got our fall application done of that. We're trying to finish up rush, we got on it again today, hopefully by tomorrow. And, um, the contractors for Pavilion, luckily for me, are pushed back another week and a half before they can get out to the park to get that constructed, so that doesn't pressure us to get that concrete poured as fast as I thought. But we're still moving forward for that.
Anything for us? Person.
Um, we wrapped up our younger age groups for both soccer and flag football last week. Uh, we still have this our final week for our older age groups, and then we'll move into girls' basketball. Um, that'll start, and, well, it'll start at the end of this month, the week of the twenty-third of October, we'll have first games for girls' basketball on November eleventh. Other than that, I'm just working on getting stuff organized for Halloween town and, uh, things like that, so.
Who's working?
Nothing other than what's in the report, just to point out that we've been starting, we've been in progress on the dare program in the schools, so. In and out of schools quite a bit, working with them. Um, that's really about it, so busy. Lot of things going.
Ambulance.
Fire chief. Uh, this is fire prevention week, so there'll be several members of the fire department heading over to the school tomorrow. And then there's some classes coming down here for Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Uh, thank you to all the members who helped out with that. Um, Dale Apple leaves that up, and he's very good with that. So we get a lot of positive comments with that. Uh, got a call from Lynch, the truck, uh, the crash truck is set to be made on October twenty-third. And they expect it to be here about four to six weeks after that. Uh, the fire association approved FEL FIRE to get the bid for, um, all the rest of the work that he's done. Lighting, tank, the flatbed, tires, everything, so, uh, that should be right around the first of the year. Uh, that'll be taken up. And then, uh, Trent and me has been working, um, pump or tanker, tanker quotes. Uh, they got a meeting Wednesday with, uh, Tony, um, to meet if they're around. And that is all I have fire related.
Fire related? So you're not sure?
I'm working on the handbook, uh, project update for city hall out here. So with, with the sidewalks, you have to make those ADA. Obviously, there's a ramp going two directions from here. They kind of changed the, the concept of what we're doing, so that concrete slab that's poured out there, that's gonna be the drug box, is gonna go on there along with that, um, donated picnic table, the recycled picnic table, so that'll go there. Uh, Greg started doing the river rock. We're gonna do river rock all the way down and up around the, the fly pole. And then we'll put, um, some plants, hostas and azaleas or something like that come springtime, um, in that area. And then from the little peninsula that shoots out to the south, that'll be dirt. So, uh, concrete work is completed. Uh, it's just dirt work and, um, doing the, the filling with the river rock, so make that all look good, so. The Recky's been doing some seeding, a lot of this on Washington Street is erosion control temporary seeding, so just everyone be patient when we come back in the spring. This project was slated over two years, so when they come back in the spring, they'll go in and fill in the areas, um, do more seeding and all that stuff. So just be patient, um, as we go along. We're gonna be doing seeding out of the horse complex. Travis has been working, the guys, they poured the footings, uh, week before last. And now they're working on the floor out there, so I believe that's formed up or. Parts that formed up, ready to go. So that'll be done, like he said, um, somewhere around the seventeenth to twentieth, uh, they're gonna come to put that building back up. Uh, today Christine and I was down at Riverside at the Department of Management, uh, TIF workshop. Go over a bunch of stuff with TIF funding and different all ways that, that works. It was a pretty good conference, so we were there today. Also in the next two weeks, history center, uh, roof that was damaged in the windstorm. Uh, there's a section on the library that's getting resealed, um, and the gutter on the back of the history center. The contractor said in the next two weeks, he's gonna schedule us to be here, so that should get, uh, taken care of. And then I heard from, heard from the contractor for city hall from our wind damage. Everything is now in and he's hoping this week or next to be here to start putting that, removing the siding, uh, putting new siding up. Fixing the windows, and then the drywall inside of here. That's all I have for you tonight. If I could answer any question you get.
Any questions for Brandon? Christina?
I attended that workshop with Brandon, and next week I will be out of the office, Wednesday through Friday, for I, the IMF Way conference.
Counselor, who wants to start, Sarah?
I don't have anything, I just, I, well, I have a couple things. I can't tell the, the workers, our public work guys, I'm not, thank you. I know that they are stressed and I know that they are currently doing what they can. And I appreciate you guys, and I know many other people do too, so, um, we'll get you guys some relief here soon, okay? That's all I got.
John?
Just one thing, uh, the Friends of the Libraries, United Nation Library, the Dolly Parton program. We've got a hundred and twenty-seven active kids in the zip code receiving books, uh, once a month. And that's over sixty percent, and Dolly Parton says if we can make it to that in five years, it's only been two years, so we're doing great. Thirty kids have reached age five, have graduated. So anybody that knows of any child, uh, in the zip code that's, uh, under five, haven't seen the library, get signed up for that. And if anybody would like to financially support that program, process twenty-five dollars and ten cents or something like that a year per child receiving books, so see the library. Thank you.
I just want to welcome the wrestling coach to the community. And, uh, congratulations to the football team, they're doing pretty good this season.
Mike?
I have nothing more than that.
Mike?
I just want to say thanks to all the city workers as well for being overwhelmed and over, overworked a little bit. Um, and the work that you guys did on the updated handbook.
That's it.
Friday, they did a dedication down at the Lincoln Square or the Lincoln Highway. Pretty any poster, pretty any board down there to get a chance to stop and look at it. Over at, it's Pleasant Creek, whatever it is. Been the parking, people are, were deprecating now. Like I know Dakota moved Saturday, and people parked in there at the ponds. I don't know if we've been doing for the pond or doing anything for that.
Like no parking or anything?
I don't know, no parking until grass is established or?
Well, the thing is, I, I don't really know anywhere along there, anybody might park this, it's all Philly.
Fifteen private parks parked in the grass. Anyway, but that, I mean, that was the first time I seen it, so. And that's all I got. Anything else? Probably put the old park or something like that.